I do call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. The date is October 25th, 2017. The time is 9:05 a.m. And we will start with a roll call from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Kim Hartman.
Pam Kirby.
Barbara Perleberg. All board members are present and we do have a quorum. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We are here for one item. And that is Discussion Action Item A, Discussion and Approval of Rebuild and Planned Use of the Hopi Elementary School Facility and Property. Birdwell, would you like to get us started this morning?
I will. First of all, let me just say that the microphones are hot enough that you actually don't even need to pull them close to you that you pick you up. So, and with the upgrade in the facility for training, we're actually able to record live today. So, people at home who are logging on can actually log on and watch our meeting today. So, from now going forward, all work studies will be able to be viewed live and timely, rather than listening to an audio. So, that said, I'll get my notes in front of me here. And I wanted to start today with, we read hundreds of emails. And I wanted to start with some quotes from two emails that clearly resonated. Not that all of them weren't important, because by all means they were. But I do want to read a couple quotes from individuals. And I'm not going to use their name, because I've also heard from many people that they didn't engage because they were fearful of causing even more strife in the community. So, in this individual, she said, "My heart is actually broken over this community and what has happened with the fighting. While I love the old buildings with the nostalgia and the warmth that will always be there, it is very clear to me that Hopi is not buildings." And she went on to explain a little bit of how she felt about that, that it was much more about the children and the parents and the teachers and those in it. She goes on later to say, "Unfortunately, you have a decision tomorrow that will upset people in either case. There is no peaceful outcome of tomorrow. I can only hope that there is an acceptance as time goes on and that people will be able to experience that input is being taken into all accounts as the details of the schools unfold." And I think that you're faced with that today. I think that this parent captured this piece. Another gentleman who, less passion, less emotion, matter of fact, much more of a business approach wrote this. "Through a career in commercial and residential real estate, I have extensive experience with project redevelopments, neighborhood interactions, zoning, land use planning, and construction projects. I have been in your shoes many times and know firsthand the time and the planning involved in getting to this stage. And I believe a thoughtful plan has been put into place for this project, given the site constraints and the desire to create a safe and secure campus. No matter what project you are involved with, people will always protest, voice opposition, and complain. In my experience, even the most non-controversial beneficial project garners people who will never be satisfied, no matter what is proposed. Gathering input and ideas from hundreds, if not thousands, of impacted parents and neighbors is a near impossible task that will never be achieved. If construction is to be halted and planning brought back to scratch, how do you believe we will end up in a different place months, if not years, from now?" And I wanted to share this, because that was also echoed by a community member who serves on the rebuild committee. How do we know a year from now, we will not end up exactly where we're at, which is people who like this plan and people who dislike this plan? And I think that that's something to keep in mind. And then he ended with this. "Most importantly, we should be placing the students and the teachers' safety as the highest priority when designing a safe and secure campus. And I believe this plan effectively does so." And then he goes on to give his opinion about that. From a community member, again, yesterday in the committee conversation, she put her business hat on and she said, "I'm just going to think about this as a business." And she said, "What I most get concerned about is how will my employees react to a change?" She says, "Then I think about the customer." So, she said, "For me, it's, are the, where are the teachers at in this? Second, where are the parents at, because they represent the children? And then, third, the community. And not to discount the community, but by the time you get to the community, you will not make everyone happy." And I thought there was a couple insights I wanted to share in conversations. Now, I know you've had hundreds of conversations, I should say hundreds. I think if I calculated all of you together, there'd be hundreds, because I know you've all shared time with us, including what we've done. So, let me now take you through some processes that have gone on. And I'm going to try to keep this somewhat succinct today, realizing that you've spent a lot of time reading emails, et cetera. So, let me start by saying who we have at the table today. So, if we could have our team just briefly introduce yourself and what your role is. If you're not part of the district team, if you'd give us just a slight background of your expertise and why you're here. So, Dennis, if we could start with you.
Good morning. I'm Dennis Rayler. I'm the Director of Building Services for the district.
Morning. John Homison with Core Construction. We're the construction manager for the project. Our specialty is construction and schools is what we do the most of all of our construction projects.
Tamara Caraway, Caraway Architects. I'm the lead principal architect on this project. I have been involved in educational architecture since 1984. Have been in business at Caraway Architects since 1984.
Louis Hartwell, Chief Business and Operations Officer, responsible for bond override, business services, et cetera, and a member of the cabinet.
My name is Laura Smith. I'm the CFO.
Pam Sittin, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Specialized Services.
Michelle Marshall, General Counsel for the district.
Now, the reason I asked him to introduce himself is I don't know necessarily everybody understands it takes a team to build a school. It's not done in isolation. Behind the architect sits a civil engineer, a mechanical engineer, and others that help design, those who come in and analyze the flooding and the issues that we face on this project. And certainly behind the contractor are multiple, multiple subs. And so, I believe we've brought the faces to the table that can answer any question that the governing board might have. Mr. Rayler lives with the maintenance and operations of this building day in and day out. He has studied the FMG lifecycle study, what it would take to invest to keep this building going forward, not to bring it up to standards, but to keep it alive and moving, and then how much it costs us to operate it each year at this point. I've asked Michelle Marshall to be very aggressive in her role in legal counsel to keep us on target, because we certainly don't need any more complaints down at the AG's office that we are not following processes. And I want to make sure that in this conversation, that the questions pertain. So, you might have some questions today that we might by legal counsel be told we can't answer, but we certainly will give back to the governing board on those. We want to make sure that we don't fall out of that process. So, she may interrupt you if she feels we're going down a trail that we need to not talk about. Now, that said, process, let me talk about process for a moment. The district has followed all legal processes to get us to the point that we're at. We, under the ONE GPA procurement, the co-op, we hired an architect. This is the same process, procurement process bid that actually the School Facilities Board uses. They use our procurement under ONE GPA for architects for their projects as well. Many other districts are using that today. Spoke to the head of ONE GPA this morning to verify that information. They met, prior to putting these processes together, they met with the Auditor General to make sure that when they were doing procurement in this methodology, that it was an approved process, that it was sanctioned. So, we began with a process that allowed us to legally procure an architect. That seems to be a continued question in the processing. We also went through a procurement process to hire Core Construction, a competitive bidding process. They were selected from multiple firms. And then the governing board has been engaged in this and approved through the process. If nothing happened today, say there is great dialogue, but the board walked away and no decision was made today, no direction given to the staff, please know you've already given direction to the staff. Prior to now, you've approved the design, the architect, and the construction firm, and we would continue to move forward. The difference between today and maybe 30 days ago is that we've gotten more input from our teacher group, we've gotten more input from our committee, we've gotten more input from the community. And we have looked at what we can do to better the design that we have put together. So, why are we at where we're at today? Because of a community forum that requested me to put a hold on construction. I don't know if that was the right decision. It certainly wasn't intended to divide a community. It was intended to be responsive to the community. In hindsight, I don't know. I can't second guess myself. I felt if we stopped, paused, and briefly had a discussion, it might benefit the community. I, too, am disheartened that this community has divided itself over a school build. It certainly is painful to see what this community is going through, but that doesn't prevent us from doing our jobs. So, board, I apologize to ask you to come to one more special meeting, to ask you to go back over your decision. I am doing this with the greatest faith that we're listening to the community and having a deeper discussion to be responsive. It was not intended to derail any of the processes. What we've done since then is we've gone in and we've read all the emails and compiled and looked at, what are the common themes that we heard? What are the potential options that could come out of these discussions? And then we ran financials with the help of our vendors to try to figure out what are the best financial pieces as well. And remember that what we're dealing with is predictive. And it's influenced by current circumstances. And I'm going to ask, I believe Laura's going to take you through those here in just a moment. But you've had fires in California, hurricanes, you've had flooding. All of those type of natural disasters, devastating disasters, have caused an increase in construction cost. So, although there are those who say, "Well, let's just wait six months, or three months, or four months," what we're also facing are, quite honestly, financial decisions. So, getting the emotion out of this, quite honestly, we have some really difficult financial issues that we are facing as we go forward because of the escalating cost. And we just got the recent U.S. report that we can share with you, that distinctly says those costs are going to continue to rise. And so, we're not looking at a decrease in construction cost. So, Laura, are you prepared to go up here and go through those? While she's getting that PowerPoint up, I want to say that we put five out there, but it's not that we didn't start with eight, or nine, or 10. We started putting every option up there and then realizing, "Well, this one is really related to this one." I want to share one that was really kind of a stranded option, and I didn't put it up there. But I do want you to know that there were individuals who said, "Close Hopi." Because when we began the process of bonding for rebuilds and the opportunities to rebuild, the question was about consolidation as well. And when you look at the components of rebuilds and the decisions that governing boards make, you have to weigh in enrollment data, age of buildings, the life cycles, continued cost, and what's your capacity? And quite honestly, in each neighborhood, we have difficult decisions about capacity. We have a non-boundaried school next to Hopi that is four miles away. It's called Echo Canyon, formerly the ANLC. And it's come up many times in these discussions as the model build. And historically, it had some issues. However, if every open enrollment child that's in there was taken out, it is, under the SFB, designed for 750 students. It is the size that Hopi would like to be. And one could, although I dismissed that community member's input, in reality, I want you to know that Hopi could be closed, that they could be moved to Echo Canyon, and Echo Canyon could go back to their home schools. And between, when we look at the enrollment data, which was part of our decision for the rebuild, you have 500 open enrollment students that sit between Tavon and Hopi that are not Scottsdale Unified School District students. They're out-of-district students. So, we serve students who didn't vote with the taxpayers on the rebuilds, who sit in the buildings where the rebuild dollars are used in these designs. So, it's very complex when you start talking about, well, how many schools do we want in a learning community? It's not up there as an option. However, quite honestly, if we go to E or F, it is a conversation that should be had down the road again, because it was one of the components to determine a school's rebuild. I was asked last night by a parent, can any one of the proposed schools end up off the list? And the answer is yes. At the decision of a governing board of who to rebuild and who not to rebuild, that could happen. Today, we're going to focus on Hopi's rebuild. We have narrowed it down and boiled it down to, she keeps moving the slide, six options, excuse me, not five, six options. The first one is just where we're at today. It's, you have a plan, you've approved it, you have an architect, you have a construction design. And so, I'm not going to focus on A, because that's where you are today. That's just simply where we are today. So, Laura, if you could take us through the financial piece of it, and then I'll do the educators' weigh-in piece.
Okay. So, as you can see, at the top of the columns is each one of the options. The first line that we had to address is, what is the delay based on these various options? If you go all the way over to F, I, there's no information for me to make a decision on, because if you're going to do that option, that's way down the road. If you go with Option E, which is to stop construction and do a total redesign, I think 24 to 36 months would be a ballpark figure that you could work with. Option D is also, could be quite a delay on there. And the other, first three, obviously, can get moving fairly fast. The cost spent to date is a number that's consistent, because no matter what you do, that's money that's gone out the door. The construction, those rates vary. ABC are the same, because the core construction stays on-site, doesn't demobilize. As you go out, the next two have cost incurred, because insurance has been bought, utilities have been run in, trailer's been brought on, there's bonds. There's a lot of expenses that if they stay on-site, is in the product already. The demobilization is a minor charge compared to the rest of it. Now, the first thing we're going to do is talk about the playground, because they started activity already. It was approved. So, in the project is the cost of refurbishing in the playground. But if you stop what you're doing and go to Option D, you're still going to need a playground put back in. So, that cost gets incurred at that point. We do have some capital override money that's for playground, but it wasn't assigned to this purpose. So, do we have any questions so far? One thing you have to keep in mind is on any of the delay costs like Dr. Birdwell brought up, there is an inflation factor and there's an escalated cost of doing business. So, Laura, do you want to say anything along that line?
No, you pretty well captured it, except on Option, let's see, on Option C, if you look at that, the reason that, let's bring this down a little bit. The reason there's a 14-week period is there is some design work that has to be involved by the architect to be able to do a split type of classroom building, if you will. But it would still enable the contractor to go ahead and begin with the build on the Advent Building while they're, while we're redesigning part of the classroom. So, that's why there's a difference in the timeline there, from eight to 10 weeks versus 14 weeks.
All right. So, we have on here what the estimated build cost is for each one of these. Now, all of these, we've broken out the adjacent ways, which on other presentations wasn't always broken out, because I don't have a solid figure. We now, Core was able to get us a solid figure. So, without any major changes, they would stay the same outside of escalation prices that go out. And we worked with Core. They were very kind and have been working with us for the last day and a half over at their offices with their projects, so that they have solid numbers on here. New design fees come into effect with caveats. To change the layout, Caraway's estimated that would be a little over $260,000, provided we don't do any major structural changes. So, steel is steel and footings, and those heavy things would incur a greater cost than this. If you want to go all the way to stop construction and do a total redesign, you'd be starting from scratch with an escalated price.
Laura, if I might at this point jump in on Option E, you might say, "Well, gosh, how come that's a $20 million project and the other ones have the escalation?" Because the reality is, in the overall master planning budgeting, remember that we have said that each school is going to cost approximately. And given the size of Hopi, if they were to remain during that timeframe, and of course, then we would be looking at 700, because we're still looking at decreasing its size, that is, that would be a square footage design drop to stay within that budget. Say, three years from now, four years from now, five years from now. Because we still have a budget that we must be responsible to an entire community over. So, we have eight schools that we've proposed. If we are truly rebuilding eight schools, you have to stay within a budget to share that money. You can't say that, "Well, gosh, four or five years from now, escalated costs, I'm going to now make this a $22 or $23 million project." Not in build the other schools in the community. So, the project still remains. Now, that lends you to the question that the community has come up with over and over, is if I'm number four, five, six, seven, am I Ingleside? Because remember, the problem with Ingleside is you got to the end of the bond and there wasn't as much money, so the design wasn't as elaborate as the other middle schools. That is a very tricky process. So, there may be, you get to the end of the design and escalated costs continue over seven years, eight years, and the board chooses not to build the eighth school, because quite simply, there isn't the funding to do it, given construction cost escalations. So, that's an estimated dollar, and that's why it is lower than the other ones that are maybe less of a delay, because we know what we're dealing with in escalation. Just explain that.
Yep. So, this $75,000 here is because to remain on target for the completion, they would have to start working some Saturdays. So, that would bring these, Option B, to the same completion timeframe by picking up the extra time. Construction charges, changes, well, it's hard to address that, because we don't know what those changes are. So, that's not a realistic expectation for us to be able to do these pre-con fees. That's the only money we have paid Core to date, is $60,000, which is up here under costs already done. This is pre-con fees that they have been exceedingly reasonable on with all that has gone on. So, they have to do some analysis along the way, and that's what that is. So, that would kick back in if you change these plans. The only one that has portable classrooms, which are exceedingly expensive, in the old days, we used to use that to address state facility money. But if you want to remodel existing classrooms, you have to relocate the students to a portable. And that is a conservative number there.
If we chose to do that?
If you chose to do that.
Now, I also want to say this, that if we didn't have the money to spend on portables, now you're talking about probably four summers to remodel a campus like Hopi. Because you take building by building, and remember that's an abatement. So, in the floor and in the ceiling is asbestos. So, you have to abate buildings. You wouldn't want students on the property during abatement. So, you would do it only over the summer when there are no students there. So, you could only take so many wings at a time. You have an escalating cost of construction, because you're mobilizing, sending them away for a year, bringing them back. So, you have that cost as well. So, then you bring portables in to offset that. You still have an issue of where do you put the children when you're talking about currently 820. We have a bit of a, it's hard to do a remodel in a school that requires such an extensive remodel. So, I'm just going to tell you that this is not a simple remodel. If we could spend just a moment, because in my belief, and I said I wouldn't do this, I just want to, I won't say my belief. Would you please get a little more detail on this Option D, please? Because I think you need to understand what remodel means instead of rebuild. So, when we say remodel, what do we mean in remodel? What does that mean, Mr. Hartwell, or Ms. Smith?
Yeah, go ahead. In this particular case, the school does not have fire sprinklers. So, that is, that's a problem. With the existing, with the existing structure that you have, there's a weight that's incurred by putting the blackrock in and the water and what have you in the sprinkler system in this building. So, in order to satisfy that, plus the new HVAC systems, literally, the structure has to be taken off at the roof. There has to be new trusses put in and allow space for not only, and weight for the water sprinkler system, but also for the HVAC and all the elements that need to go in with that. So, it's not, it's not just a simple abatement and go ahead and rewire and put in AC and run with it. The other issue you have is going back to the 2011 initial review of what this would take to look like. We have ADA compliance problems. We have roof elevation problems that are 6.6 feet, which is not in compliance on the outside. We currently have some issues with drainage problems that we've had for some time. And that drainage problem is not due from the mountain and the rain coming up. It's actually from the roof when we have rains and comes into certain areas there. So, we have flooding. So, that's got to be taken care of. So, it is not just as simple, let's take a wing, remodel it, put children into one of the cabins and work through that. It's quite a lengthy process in order to go through that, to be able to do that change. So, you can't take 800 students, put them into multiple units, and then try to bring them back. It's kind of like you said, it's a good two, three-year process to get that through.
Ms. Caraway, from architecture, you've done some rebuilds in schools. And could you expand that just slightly, too, about the code problems that you run into?
Yes, absolutely. Some of the issues that we have with code compliance is that not only in a rebuild do we have facilities that were built in the 50s and the 60s and remodels along the way, but we also now have current code requirements for energy efficiencies, for makeup air. So, there's a number of things of that level, as well as things with traffic queuing, student drop-off, to meet the current requirements that a city would place on a site such as this. Some of the other things as well are systems that are typically at 50 years past the point of refurbishing. In other words, with this facility, we've got underground water piping, piping systems that are galvanized. Those are not materials that typically last forever. Sometimes with our copper piping, those are one of the first things to deteriorate, because of the chemical reactions and stuff that are associated with copper, especially with this type of era of construction. So, the ADA requirements are something that impact structure. Many times, we cannot obtain the approaches and the grades that we need without extensive renovation. And so, that comes into play with creating larger openings and bringing in some structural modification. And then, of course, there's seismic. We actually have seismic codes that have changed over the years that are more stringent than they used to be. So, many times, we don't have the proper level seismic requirements, details that are provided in facilities of this nature. So... So, I have worked on... So I have worked on facilities built by this architect. And again, air conditioning systems were not. Air conditioning systems were not developed the way they are today. So not only with the makeup requirements and everything, but many times, they are a modified system of an, of a vac cooler system. So I would offer that with other clients, when we look at, do we do a renovation of an existing facility? We're going to spend at or just under, and in some cases even over, what we would with a brand-new rebuild.
Dr. Birdwell, if I could make one more point. If you notice in option D, it also includes a new multipurpose building and a new admin building. So if, if we're taking a look at a remodel specifically to the classroom buildings and then having the outside cabins for the children, we still have to take a look at building two new buildings. It's going to have, let's say, various elevations that people will have to consider when you have that rebuilt. So, and those would be new buildings that would be built.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one is a financial question. Correct me if I'm wrong. Adjacent ways that it's $1,058 across the board, that is not funded by the bond. That's funded by a separate fund.
That's correct. It's on account.
So is it captured, if you scroll down? Is it captured in the total, is that $1,058 captured in the total project cost?
Yes, it is.
So can we back that out, since it's not part of the bond? Would that be an inaccurate request? Just so we get on the same page.
Board Member Kirby, the reason it's in there is so that we can actually reflect what's called a total build cost, and that's why that we put the adjacent ways in.
Okay, and I, I understand that. But if we're going to, as a board, be asked to manage the total bond, it's not paid for out of the bond. So it's almost, it's, okay. So the second question I have is, can you please explain the difference between option B and option C?
I can actually do that. Do you want the financial explanation?
No, just the, the model.
The model explanation. Okay, so why don't we finish the financials and then I'm going to talk about the modeling, if you don't mind. Are you all done with that part?
Can I? Yeah, Financial.
I have one financial question. The, the cost escalation, row, is that, is that supposed to be capturing all of anticipated inflation for two to three years?
Yes, it's a 5% right here on option D.
So actually, I think that's fairly conservative because that would be a cumulative, I'm assuming, just based on where the cost of construction is going and all the limitations in the market in terms of resources, that 5% per year would be kind of a reasonable expectation. So two to three years, we're talking 10 to 15%, and on 21 million, we're talking somewhere closer to 3 million. So that seems awfully low to me.
Well, it is, but right now, they are escalating quickly, and there are some things in the market that may calm back down. It's, it's a crystal ball that if I put a higher number here, it's going to look like I tried to increase the cost too much.
Right. So do you mind, though, if I ask our construction expert what he's anticipating per-year inflation rates looking like, if it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, say, up to 36 months?
Yes, so currently, it is 1% per quarter since after the downfall and we've started back on our growth, which equates then to 4% a year. With, as mentioned before by Dr. Birdwell, with all the catastrophes happened past year, we're getting information now, potential materials going up. So that's why we're set the four to six per year. And that is, you know, our best with the information we have that we attract. It is not a lump sum for the project. You're right, it is per year.
Okay, so to that point, we're talking 4% to 6%, just round it 5%. 5% on 20 million is a million. A million for each year, and it's cumulative. So we're talking $2 to $3 million, which is significant. And it's, so I just think that should be reflected in here too, based on our, the expertise we have.
That would be the proper number to have.
If I put, if I put 10 in here, whoops.
And to that point, Ms. Hartman, when you think of rebuilds and the scope of eight, as I said earlier, we may get to the end of the project and number eight may not occur, based on circumstances out of your control.
Board Member Kirby?
As a follow-up to Board Member Hartman's question, on the cost escalation, you said materials. Are you including labor in that as well? Or do you think of it together, or is there a separate labor?
That is total combined construction costs, as you go, yes.
Materials and labor. Thank you.
Board Member Beckham? Along those, along those same lines, is, under option E, where we stop it and do a total redesign, is there any penalty in the contract right now? Any financial penalty?
To us, no. It's, I mean, just our cost to date and the fee on top of that.
So in answer to that question, column F, really, the only cost incurred on, the only cost in column F is, is the cost to date and to pull out. Any other comments or questions?
So I'm going to switch gears here and talk about each of the models and maybe, hopefully, I can address the question. If I don't, certainly come back to me on that. So in defining those in option A, boy, it's, it's really just recoup the loss of time of construction. Now, I did a delay at the request of the community for two weeks, but it's really a four-week delay. So we're now, we will now be behind by four weeks because the reality is, the subs were let go to go off and work and do other projects, and it will take a while to remobilize them and bring them back. So there's at least two weeks. Now, unfortunately for the community, that means to make up time to get on track to open in August, we would be working Saturdays. And that is not a very popular option in this community. I'm just going to share that with you. That, however, would occur in any one of the move-forward options. But option B, let me talk about B, and then I'll talk about C and the difference between the two. So the thematic concerns, where did those come from? Those came from the e-mills, that, that parent forum that we have, and we heard window over and over and over again. Pavements, the east, what we were calling the Kinder drop-off. Now we're calling the east drop-off. Shorten it, make it, make it different. So 15 changes, and there's actually 16, and I'm not sure this one, yep, it does have my indent and breezeways. From a conversation with our teaching staff, two and a half hours with our teaching staff, really enjoyed their input, and they were very open in sharing ideas. And no, they're not 100% consensus, but there are certain things that we did have consensus on. And I have our principal here today as well. The media center, hey, could we move that to the center of the classroom building, making it the hub of learning? And speaking with the lady who is the librarian there, great idea. Love it. And I can't remember the principal, the teacher's name. Molly. Bring an idea. I don't know why that never dawned on me. I, as I said in front of her colleagues, wow, bring an idea, Molly. She was the one that came up with that, that came from a teacher. They currently have high windows. That's not an issue. They can have some hallway windows added as well. Computer labs. Students don't spend hours and hours on end in the computer lab. So is it, it could be in the interior where there aren't the windows, where they can, they could come in, do the computer work and move on, and particularly for the testing, et cetera. Speech OT, move to internal spaces. It decreases the time that a child works to that specialist. So I lose time every time I have to walk to another building and walk back from that building to get back to my classroom. So in the updated design, it actually takes a classroom and splits it, so 450 square foot apiece. And I talked with our speech pathologist yesterday, very excited about that. She's thrilled that the students would not have as much walking time to get to her. Same thing with OT space. Haven't talked with the OT about it. The faculty room would go to internal where there aren't windows. That didn't seem to bother the teachers. When I take my break, I'd like to just take my break. And so that space certainly could be moved. That's where the teachers do their copying, where they sit down and have a break away from, from the school day. There was a definite message from our teachers. Our buildings are not moving us forward to the future. Our Wi-Fi, our technology cannot handle the instruction we would like to do. Could you please assure me, Dr. Birdwell, that a new build will take this into consideration and move us forward? So that is a priority for us. When we look at number six, can you decrease the east drop-off and quit calling it the Kinder drop-off? No problem. There is a fear that we're going to put preschool there. I want to clarify that. What we talked about is 15, 20 years from now, we don't know what the demands of the community might be. And maybe it's decreased in size and it's a 500-student campus, and at that time, they want to add preschool. Preschool is handled different than kindergarten. You actually have to go in and sign your child in. So the reason that that was in there was thinking of the future, but not a problem. We can drop that back and decrease it and increase the kindergarten play area without changing the interior pieces of that. Shorten the bus drop-offs. Absolutely could be done. What we would do is make a wider but shorter, making sure we stay with 124 parking lots required under the code restrictions. Add an outdoor amphitheater came from our teachers. Would really like to have that. I went and visited on Friday Anasazi, looked at their outside amphitheater space. It is tiered with grass retaining wall, another grass level, very easy to add into this project. It's about locating that outdoor space. Now remember that the outdoor teaching spaces have not been totally designed because I'm waiting for my next meeting with the teachers to say, what works for you? What do you want? And we have four exterior outdoor learning spaces to design, but they will be designed by our teachers. That happens to be one of the requests of the teachers. It is very doable. Add a tree well in the bus area because it looks like this big old piece of pavement out there. Certainly, we can add something to the center that allows the turnaround for the buses. Hopi lane came out of an idea from one of our committee members. Again, I thought it was a really great idea. I went and visited some of the other elementary schools, and they do have short lanes. What they do is connect what is a natural kid cut-across pathway, we call them. In other words, I don't care how many sidewalks you have, the kids walk here. Don't put grass there because it's going to be worn down in dirt within days. And what we do is we create little pathways. And, and again, at Anasazi, for example, those are only about 10 feet long, but they are connected pathways where the bricks have parents' names that have donated through PTO. Well, we have a lot of brick at Hopi. We can pull that up and move it and create that pathway, retain that history, keep that tradition. And actually, what we're considering here is a brick pathway that comes from the entrance all the way around to that classroom building. And that keeps some of that nostalgia there. Art tiles, and we've said from the beginning, but somewhere it got lost in communication. The art tiles, many of them are already framed. They're framed to be removed from the building and moved to the new building. They're not in any drawing because we, or the architect, will not assign those art tiles. That will be done by teachers. The teachers will walk the campus and decide where the art tiles will be hung to bring that familiarity forward. The Hopi hawk, there's a place on the front of the school where there's a Hopi hawk and, and people take their pictures there. Last week, I witnessed a group of students standing in front of it, having a picture taken. We'll bring that Hopi hawk and that wording to the new campus again. It will be assigned by the staff and the parents, the PTO collaborative, where they want the Hopi hawk. Move the basketball courts. There's a desire in the future to cover the basketball courts. If they're in the location they currently are, that is a fire lane. We are required to have the 20-foot fire lane that a fire truck can go through the campus. And that is part of a new regulation that we have to adhere to. So we would move the basketball courts back down to the southern area, which would allow the future, if the PTO, the boosters wanted to cover that and have a covered basketball court, they could add that cover. You cannot cover it and ask a fire truck to drive through it. So that is a move. It's completely possible to do. Are there potential elevation changes? Yes, but we're still confused because I will tell you that last week I was told to bring back the Santa Barbara, and this week I was told to bring mid-century modern. So I've asked the architectural firm, can you change the design facing of the building, the elevation? This is, we're not talking height right now. We're talking, I call it vernacular, the front of the building. And the answer is yes, and she sent over last night three different renditions that pick up Santa Barbara, which was, and we haven't shown them to the committee because they weren't ready yet. So we got to go back to the committee and have that conversation. I also, she did a mid-century modern. And, and then, I'm not sure what that other one was. Can you, the gables that look like the houses, what is that?
Let's call it residential farmhouse.
Okay, so it has gables on it. And it tries to buy in the gables that we see in many of the homes and, again, trying to pull the vernacular from. Now, do we, are we set on any one of those? No, no, we're not. But I will tell you that every meeting I attend, somebody has a different view of what that should be. So back to our very first quote, or second quote, ask 100 people, get 100 different answers. You can't get consensus. But the committee will be tasked with that decision, not the school district. Pick what elevation you want, and if it fits in our budget, we're happy to do it for you. So there's still room for that. Can you move, this came from the teachers, can you move the playgrounds away from the school? Right now, I'm a teacher who teaches and the playground is outside my room. In two hours a day, I have a hard time teaching while children's voices are heard through the walls. That's a problem for teachers. So we actually, in this redesign, moved the playgrounds out by the soccer field so that the teachers have that quiet zone for instruction. And I think that was a very insightful piece. Another teacher had come up with, can we indent the breezeways? And create a place where if it is raining, kids can get out of the rain, but also, it allows us to put another window in another interior classroom. And the answer to that is yes. Certainly, we can do that. And we'll be able to indent those breezeways as well. So this is the type of dialogue that was intended to continue to have with the committee going forward. This is all doable within our budget to be able to create this learning environment. I talked with the, I'll go back, back up here now. So what's the difference between B and C? In C, you take that classroom large building and you divide it into two buildings. And I know what floated in the community the other day was a 10-building breakup. What wasn't included in that were 124 parking spots, the fire lanes and other pieces. And I realize I didn't have time to fully develop it. But what we had been working on was, could we take the classroom building and divide it, giving every room a window? The same thing happens in, in option B. The theory there is, every teacher has a window. Many have lower-story windows, and some will have some high-story windows. But there will be no regular classroom teacher without a window. Because the other thing that that build does is where the media center is, it moves an entire grade level to the admin building, creating a, like a fifth-grade group there with all having windows. So we're able to take the six school classroom rooms that didn't have windows and develop them into that B design. In C, what we say is, everybody has a window. And to, to do that, what we did was we split that building and laid it, laid it out. It has some more work to be done to make sure that, what square footage are we going to lose? So the collaborative spaces, the indoor collaborative, one of the things we heard from teachers is how important the collaborative space is. Right now, they go outdoor for some of that. But in the 115, and they're not going outdoors. And some of our volunteers who come to read with children are also not sitting outside reading either. So the story behind that is, give every teacher a window. It also is shortening the driveway, the, I'm sorry, the drop-off, the K-drop-off, creating more PE space. It lowers the height of the building. So we're still working through the height issue. It is a square footage reduction. The reason there's a square footage reduction is that you don't need the quad collaborative spaces, and you're trying to create a window for every teacher. So therefore, you end up with hallways of classrooms, and you don't create the collaborative. Now, in the design, we would recommend that there be one collaborative space, but there isn't, right now, the current design is six collaborative spaces. So there would be a decrease. Now, why is that important? In the decrease of square footage, you, you gather some cost savings, which then allows you to go into redesign, so that you can keep your costs down. But the priority there was windows for all. Remove the upper clear storage. There seems to have been some concern about that, so that would be removed. It does leave the media center over in the admin building. It doesn't put it back in the center of school. That, the big difference is, take that big building, draw a line down the middle and split it out and redesign it, get rid of collaborative and create a window for every teacher. That's what it's doing. That's the C design. It doesn't touch the, at the moment, it doesn't touch the admin building. It doesn't touch the gymnasium that houses your band, your choral, your art. Those buildings remain the same. The footprints remain the same. This is only taking the classroom building and redesigning it. So that's the big difference between the two. In option D, remodel the existing classrooms. That's just take this current building that we have and remodel it. Take the top off, redo it. Take the top off, redo it, get rid of the flooding, get rid of the rats, get rid of the flood, the issues that we've had, and bring it up to code. Option E, stop construction. Totally stop. Take the plans, roll them up, excuse me, stop construction totally and start all over. And start all over is, and it would be my recommendation if we do this, that we go out for a new procurement, that we go forward through hiring, going back through a hiring of architect, and go back through our construction procurement, et cetera, and spend a year talking, is what I would recommend, given the experience that I've just had. I would not recommend that if we're going to go through this, hire a third-party consultant, have them go talk with the community. I'm not sure that our committee would stay together, maybe put a new committee together. I don't, I don't know. We'd talk to a consultant about that, but just start all over and take our time. Where that would occur and when it would be built would depend on how quickly we move on that, and quite honestly, I would, I would say that it, one thing's for certain, they get moved behind Pima and HOCOM because we need to get over and give our attention back to some of the other communities who have been asking us. Don't know about the governing board, but I'm getting emails every week from other portions of the community who have been waiting for theirs, and this is a domino effect. I'm sorry. And F is, hold off and shelf it. Enough is enough. Roll it up, put it on a shelf, wait. Wait until Hopi is ready to be rebuilt and then rebuild it. Because quite honestly, I don't know that we're going to find a happy answer here. There's many unknowns in this. There is cost escalations. I would suggest we go back and study enrollment. Do you need this build? Are there other options? What are the cost savings? Would you downsize the project to meet the escalating cost? What are the procurement issues? I've asked our attorney to spend some time with procurement because you, you can't simply have somebody from the community hand you a set of plans and say, "Go build this." That puts us in all kinds of procurement violations. We have a procurement with an architectural firm, we have gone through procurement with a, with a construction firm. To talk to other vendors right now would be a violation of procurement. So as much as the community wants us to pick the phone up and call this architect and call this construction firm, I'm not, I'm not able to do that without breach of law. So I'm not going to do that. I haven't done that. And neither can the governing board engage new firms and new construction firms or architects without going through a brand-new procurement. Michelle, would you like to offer any extra to that process on rebuilds?
I think you captured it fairly, Dr. Birdwell. Certainly, there's been quite a process, and we took great care to make sure that we were in compliance, and we would want to make sure to do that with any new process. And having conversations with potential vendors outside of that process muddies that process and potentially disqualifies those people.
Okay, so I talked with the academic people because I think it's important to have an academic conversation about each of these. So the last part of this is about, hey, is there any academic interruption? So the first one is, there's no academic interruptions. They're already interrupted. Not having your playground is already an interruption. They're a construction zone, but we're doing our best to mitigate that. No matter what option we have there, construction zone. There were some positive academic pieces that the academic team, and I say academic team, the district academic team, we, we talked about, hey, you know, that library in the center is a really neat concept from a teaching perspective. It's a shorter walk, a less of a loss of time walking kids to a media center. The hope is that we would use our media center more because it is close to a classroom. Computer labs are then closer to classrooms. Maybe they'd be more than just testing centers, but teachers could actually go in there and use for instructional integration. Speech OTPT, less time, windows in the classroom, high and low. We like the natural light, we think it's important. Playground away from the classroom, we thought academically that was a very good point by a teacher. The outdoor amphitheater, yeah, those are great. Those are great opportunities for children. The academic team totally supports an amphitheater for students. And certainly, updated technology, the integration of technology, the academic team continued to think that was important. When we looked at the split, split building on D, make sure I'm in the right building, one of the things that came up were the exits, multiple exits. There's a few more exits in that. We thought that was a good piece when I'm getting to and fro to the outside learning environments, a little quicker route. Interior courtyards always love for good outdoor learning spaces. Playground's again away, outdoor amphitheater, updated technology. When we looked at the E, which is the remodel the existing classrooms, there were, the academic team just said, Bay, it's unknown. There's going to be a disruption. You can only do so many classes at a time, and the bottom line is, as long as we are creating a healthier space for children, that the air is healthier, that the environment is healthier, and certainly, it needs to have, if that's a choice the board went with, we need the upgraded technology. The teachers have shared that with our academic team. The last two really, the academic teams just simply said, the positive is that you get more community input, and the others academically are pretty well unknown because they don't know what they're talking about in the design because the designs aren't done. So meanwhile, some of the negatives of the academic team, you know, when you put a library in the center of a building, it's not used as often by the community because we don't really allow adults in that haven't been appropriately gone through the volunteer process that sign in. It does slow that. And many times, libraries are used by the community for meetings, et cetera. So we want to make sure that we have appropriate space up in the front of the building for our community. The soccer field is slightly smaller, so that might be a negative for the PE people, but when I spoke to them, they weren't concerned. They don't need a competition regulation soccer field. Potential loss of square footage, that is always a concern. You know, every academic team wants more space, and when they talk collaborative and make your space, they always want it. So that was shared. There was a concern, and we talked about this, and it's something that we talked openly with our teachers about. We said, "Look, if we delay and we don't, we go back to a split or a redesign and you don't open in August, and you were asked if you would be ready to move in December so that we can move over the holidays." It was a unanimous, "Don't move me in the middle of the school year. You will disrupt learning." And that's very legitimate on behalf of a teacher because what that means is, I'm going to be spending my time in December, after school, in the evenings, packing my stuff. And if you've not been to an elementary classroom in a while, there's a lot of stuff. So there's packing that goes on, there's labeling that has to go on to that. Then there's a cost to hire movers. And then the question was, would I give up some of my holiday to get ready to move? And the answer to that is, in the priority of life, we don't ask teachers to give up family time for school. It's really inappropriate to even ask that. And I heard in, from a teacher who said that, you know, well, somebody said, "Well, we'll pay you to do it." And I said, "I don't care how much you pay me. I'm not sacrificing, sacrificing my family time over the holiday to move." So we really feel a December move is off the table if we're going to respect our employees. And therefore, it really would be a 2019 move. It would be over the summer. Potential loss of square footage to save some costs, and as you go through that again, the total remodel is a phase over multiple summers. Portable buildings potentially, summer programs not being there for multiple years, and no additional collaborative space. The negatives on the, let's wait and postpone. The teachers are still waiting for their new technology. It's not going to happen. We wouldn't go in and put money into buildings that we aren't going to save long-term. We would, we would hold off on some of that investment. And there are significant delays. And again, we believe that there would be square foot loss over time. So those are the conversations that have happened since last Monday. A great deal of man-hours have been put in there. So I would take any question, and the team would take any question the governing board has at this time.
All right, Board Member Hartman.
One follow-up question for you, Dr. Birdwell, regarding the December timeframe move. You spoke about the, you know, the challenges with just the physical move. I had, there's also challenges with losing academic teaching time to teach kind of younger K-5 kids to kind of relearn all the rules. Can you speak to that too, and what your thoughts are from that academic loss?
Yeah, you know what? I'm going to ask the principal to step up with me because I thought she, when we brought this up in the meeting and I saw her face for the first time on this, I actually felt bad for saying it because, what's it like to start up twice in a year?
It would, it would definitely take lots of procedures. It would definitely take lots of education, not only for our teaching staff, but also for the parent community. If they were to move to a brand-new classroom building, it's not just what goes on inside the classroom, but it's walkways from this classroom to the cafeteria. It is procedures for recess, it's procedures for cafeteria time, it's procedures for before school, after school. It's a lot of education to the parent community about drop-off and pickup because obviously the traffic lanes would change at that time, too. So it would definitely be starting a brand-new school year in January. So inside of the classroom, education for parents and teachers, it would definitely take an extensive amount of planning and time just to execute that.
She's much calmer than she was the first time. She's had time to think about it.
Thank you. Board Member Becca.
So can I follow up with a question? So is that loss of time, is still going to happen in August also? Because even though you're moving in, the kids and the parents are not in the school, so it starts the days, maybe the day before the education, and so you're kind of have a loss that first week in August also?
We always do. Every school in the district goes through routines and processes the first week of school. No matter how many years your child has been in the school, now I'm in a different location, and there's sometimes different routines. Every school goes through that every year, and this would be doing it twice.
Yeah, we usually typically spend the first two weeks talking about expectations, not only just for physical movement amongst the school, but just classroom expectations, behavior expectations as well. We spend a significant amount of time prior to the school year even starting, just educating brand-new families. We have a New to Hopi Night at the start of every year. Typically, that's filled with kindergarten families that are just starting their experience at Hopi, but it's for any new family that has moved into the area, just to talk about drop-off, pickup, after-school options, just kind of getting families familiar with our school. So I would foresee that that happening as well, regardless of when we move into a new building. But if it were to be in August, all of that can happen over the summer. Typically, I start communicating with parents in the middle of July, just about what our activities are for the startup of the school year, Meet the Teacher Night, New to Hopi Night, we talk about class lists and how that happens and unfolds as well. So there's time in July to be able to do that, and that's typically when families are looking for that type of information, too, because it's just the start of the school year.
Okay, Board Member Becca.
So really, this option C is what I'm hearing is, is, I think, didn't it say December? But really, what we're thinking is not December.
Yeah, we wanted to be realistic that that is an option to move because it would be ready by December, but it would not be the academic recommendation that we would move a school mid-year and not the recommendation of the classroom teachers, that they did not, they were in consensus to not move. I think it was a consensus, that was one of the consensus pieces we got, was not to move in December, that that was not conducive to learning or to teaching.
From an academic standpoint, too, just the proximity of time between that and testing in April and March as well, it is a really challenging. October to, granted, all throughout the school year, we're focused on the academic learning and achievement, but really, that October to March is when we're really doing the bulk of our instruction for those tests. It's definitely a focused academic.
I guess I'll jump in, oh, unless you have a follow-up question. I just want to kind of confirm some understanding that I have in that that priority and that understanding of how disruptive to learning and to those students mid-year move or can be was really a factor almost from day one in planning and designing this building as well. Is that correct? I mean, my understanding is that those considerations were in this footprint design from the start.
That is, that is absolutely correct. Ms. Perleberg, when, when we've been working with these school designs, we've tried to sequence them to the beginning of a school year. And whether it ties with a programmatic piece where there's a new program starting or, quite honestly, the startup of school, simply to not disrupt learning. And so anytime, anytime we can do that, it's ideal. I'm not saying that it can't be done mid-year because it has in certain places, particularly where there's overcrowding and there's not enough classroom space for children. We're crowded, but we're not at a point where, where we have kids in the hallway or class taking place in the media center in place of a classroom and shut down a media. But when there are school districts, so they had to close down other academic space to create classroom space because they are that overcrowded, you might see a mid-year opening. But we, as educators, tend to try not to do that because there is a series of disruptions as our principal has expressed. So this has been part of the plan from beginning to open in August, the same as any one of our, our plans would be. Very, very difficult.
Thank you. Board Member Becca.
So does the financial analysis you did, it includes additional cost for a December opening, and so therefore, if it was moved back to in August, would there be additional that needed to be added on to this analysis?
I don't think that we put a moving cost in anywhere of our models. No.
No, not moving additional costs because of, that you're changing from option A.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I understand the question.
So in the financial analysis, well, under, under option C, you say open December, but now you're saying it really inhibits academic learning and would be better to open at the new fall, school year in the fall of 2019.
No, so even though the building might be ready, what happens is the rest of the construction.
Okay, so there's no additional cost to be added if that move-in date is moved to August instead of December as it is stated on here?
My understanding, we would continue to stagger the construction. We have other buildings that are being worked on.
Okay, I just didn't know if I need to add something. I do have, yes, of course. So under option B, does it address the height issue?
No, we are still, we've, we've asked the architect to consider that. We're still in the conversation about that. If we lower the height, let's say that we lower it by a foot, does that mean the four-by-four windows in the upper story become three-by-three? How does it impact the mechanicals? So they've got to get back in with mechanical engineers and others to discuss air conditioning and other things that are running up there. And then the parapets are designed to cover mechanicals, air conditionings, et cetera. So we are in discussion with that, but I could not answer specifically that height could not be lowered. The other thing to remember is that the gymnasium is one of the highest buildings. However, these are K-5 students, they're not high school competition students. So could we lower that building? My belief, and I'm speaking out of turn, is yes, because it's not, if it was a high school competition gym, the answer would be no, because there's regulations. But as an elementary gym, could I lower it? And the answer is yes, it could be lowered. But what we haven't got a concrete answer on is that classroom building where we have the clear windows, you call it clear story, that we are still in discussion over.
So to follow up, option B is, these are not the only things that are going to be looked at. There's still some additional areas that could be looked at and changed.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. The answer is yes. There are two things we're looking at. We're looking at the exteriors right now, and what, we, we heard clearly from the community, they didn't like the exterior design, so we're working with the committee on what could that look like. We've had three new renditions drawn up to share with the committee. Then we were looking at height, and then we're looking at outdoor learning space with the teachers, and then we're meeting with the teachers about interior design space, enough storage, where do I put my backpacks? Is it a backpack cubby and a hook, or is it just a backpack cubby? Those are all teacher decisions. So there are two more meetings that we'll be meeting with the teaching staff, at the very least, and then there are more committee meetings that will go on probably for the next six months.
So.
Didn't know you signed up for that, did you?
Is there the ability to also look at the amount of concrete and the queuing that is, the way that it's designed?
We have, both of those slated, oh, the queuing piece, okay. So the queuing, I'm going to let the architect answer that, but the queuing is, under the city, they give you a range. And if I remember correctly, it's, is it 1,500 or 1,700 to 3,400, and we're at 24? And could we shorten that queuing? The intent is to get the cars off the street. That's the one thing that I've heard only positive from the community on, but maybe there are others who are unhappy, but Tammy, why don't you answer that?
We're required to have a range of two to four feet, and right now, we're at three feet per child, based on 800, just to make sure that we have adequate capacity. Because one thing that we know for sure is, as student populations ebb and flow, they, some years are a little higher than others, so we always make sure that we have room to grow. The pavement, when you're talking about concrete within the interior space, absolutely, but we still have to get a fire lane through that facility. So we can certainly modify, make some, some changes in that, but we do have some specific requirements that are dictated by the state Fire Marshal's Office and the City of Phoenix.
But still room open to look at that site plan, given how much asphalt there is surrounding that entire school? That's a possibility with option B. That's a possibility with option B.
Asphalt, when you talk about paving?
Paving.
Paving in general.
The roads.
Paving in general, yes, ma'am. Pavement and parking are dictated by the City of Phoenix.
Okay. But still can be looked at to make some changes.
Board Member Kravitz?
Board Member Beckham asked my question, so thank you with regard to height. Is there a minimum height for regulation for elementary schools and for academic buildings, and also for gym? And I think if we, when we look at lowering the size of a gym roof, I guess we might also be limiting the use by the community for other purposes, you know, for other groups that want to come in and use the facility. Granted, there are other schools in the area that we could direct them to if our new gym doesn't serve their purposes, but I'm just curious about those two.
Yes, Ms. Kravitz, there are requirements, depending on what you want to use your facility for. There's also rules of thumb. This gym is designed to have a 26-foot clear to the underside of structure. We definitely can lower that. We look at what the use of the gym is going to be anticipated for, whether it's basketball for community use, whether there's volleyball in there. If we go volleyball, we actually would prefer to go a little bit higher, but given if it's going to be used just for students and general athletic use, we definitely can lower it. So that is certainly an option.
And what is the requirement for academic buildings in terms of height?
Again, it's going to depend, with K-5, it really is at your discretion.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. So back to the financial schedule, I zeroed out, I'm looking at it right now, all of the adjacent ways costs. And after doing that, option B, which have some fabulous enhancements to the original plan, is currently a half million dollars over budget. So if my colleagues remember, when we first kicked off these construction projects, I asked about what constitutes a change order, and will the board have approval on these change orders? I don't know if these changes that were earlier summarized constitute a change order. But my question is, it's already half million dollars over budget, so where does it stop? Because I do, and I'm very much a proponent of listening to these great ideas that are coming forward to make a great project really, really great. However, we have a fiscal responsibility to bring these projects in on budget, or we're going to repeat the past, which I have hoped we have all learned from. So...
Let me answer the first part for you.
Yeah, and I want to add one more thing, because as these, we may decide to continue to bring in these enhancements, but we also have to make a decision as a board, where does that come from? We can't continue to add and add and add and have cost escalation without taking something away. And is that a playground? Is that square footage? I don't know where that conversation happens, and I guess that's really my question.
So they don't constitute a change order at this stage, and our goal is, any one of those, what we were answering is, are those feasible? So the answer to that is, they are feasible to do. Then the challenge that my team is tasked with is, now that it's feasible, bring it in within budget. So then becomes a dialogue of, what do you give up to get? And is it, now, something that's not real, but I'll use it as an example, like for instance, do you get polished concrete in the hallway, or do you get carpet? Those kind of conversations then begin to be had, or does the gym become one foot smaller in circumference to gather square footage to adjust to the cost? So those are the conversations that we'll begin to have. If we have option B, our job is to bring it within budget. That's where we, and then we have contingencies in there as well. And then I'm seeing hands go up, so I may have caused panic at the end. Mr. Hartwell, what's your two cents?
No, that's okay. You have to keep in mind, Board Member Kirby, that we have not presented to you GMP-2 yet for Hopi.
A little loud, I'm not hearing you down here.
I thought I was a loud one.
Can you? Okay. Can you hear you back here?
It's just there. Don't need to yell.
Just a little bit louder.
Okay. We have not presented to the board GMP-2 for Hopi, which is guaranteed maximum price for the builder to actually build a school. If you take a look at option two, option B, there's $75,000 in there for acceleration, there's $261,500 in there for new design fees that you wouldn't incur. I don't need to come back to you yet and ask you for a change order. I haven't asked you to approve anything yet. So if we did, I did come to you with a GMP for this, which I was hoping to in November, we would take this into consideration, and there would be discussion before that on any value engineering that we could do prior to that to keep us in budget. So just to let you know, we haven't presented to you GMP yet, so we're not over budget yet. We're still in discussions, and so there's still time to talk about it.
Board Member Kirby?
Thank you. Follow-up question. So after GMP-2, is it a fair statement to say that design must stay constant and static at that point, and that if it doesn't, that's what constitutes a change order?
That's correct, and I would have to come back to you and get that, get your permission to be able to do those changes.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Kravitz?
I was just going to say, after what Ms. Kirby said, we haven't even started digging around that building, so who knows what we'll find and what additional costs we'll incur, and we're already at by over $500,000 technically, quote-unquote, over budget. So I think that's something to keep in mind, because there's always going to be something that we didn't anticipate, so I just want to throw that out there.
Board Member Beckham?
I'll also add then to follow, there are areas that maybe that we can cut back on to make up, and that's what is being talked about. And that's where compromise has to come in, if we're going to be involving the stakeholders in this design. And I believe that's the way it should be, and we should be doing that from the beginning and with all of our communities. But we have to understand, as Dr. Burwell pointed out, I guess on that second person saying, nothing can be peaceful, that kind of hit me the wrong way. We're looking for what is going to be best for the students, the teachers, and so there's going to have to be compromise. Not every one of us is going to get everything that we want, so I always have to keep that in the forefront of my mind. But I do believe that we can build a better site plan and a better facility than what's existing now.
Board Member Kirby?
So to that point, if we move forward with B, and all agree we want to continue the dialogue of cost benefits, of recommendation enhancements, how does that happen? How does that happen going forward to achieve the inclusivity that Board Member Beckham has asked for? I don't, I'm just asking, have we thought through that?
Well, our intent, Board Member Kirby, is to continue to work with the committee, and I think the committee has learned that they have an external committee to reach out to, and they've been doing that. But our job is to continue with that committee that has been in place, that has the full conversation occurring and getting that. But what happens is, they bring us an idea, or a teacher brings us an idea, and then we take it back and vet it. I mean, can you put an amphitheater in? What are the types that you would put in in a K-5? What is the cost of an amphitheater? Is it just the movement of dirt, or is it actually building a concrete amphitheater outdoors? There's a huge difference in that range. So the committee can continue to bring us forth idea, we vet it, we look at the cost. If there's a cost incurred, we have to then say, what are we giving up on this site to allow it to occur? Because our job as the district level is to stay within budget, and we're going to continue to stay in budget. So our, process-wise, if the question more concretely is, am I going to go meet with 100 people from the community? No, I'm not. I'm going to meet with a committee and respect that committee, who represents the committee, community, and they can go back out and meet with the community. That is our plan. Now, if I'm directed by the board to do differently and hire a third-party person to work with 100 people, I will do that, but honestly, that's not what we're looking at in option B. Option B is enhance the design that is there, and that would be working with the teachers and the staff that live in that building, and continue to work with the committee we have, and ask them to be aggressively reaching out to the other groups. Now, I'm not going to demand that of them, that's their job to do, and I can't impose on their life either, but I would ask them, if you're representing the community, please reach back to the community on this concept. And that's how we would plan to do it.
Board Member Hartman?
I have two separate comments. First, a follow-up on the rebuild committee. So one, I would like to extend appreciation to the rebuild committee, because I think this is far above and beyond what any of you signed up for, similar to running for the school board, but just want you to know, it is appreciated, and I hope the entire community appreciates that, because I know there was a process, a thoughtful process to identify who was actually best representing the most inclusive community. So thank you for your work. My question related to that, and this is still number one of number two, is is there, I don't even know how to ask this, because I almost want to cancel out the question as I'm asking it myself, because I understand the challenges with it. Because what is valuable about a committee of any is continuity, so to have the same individuals continue to participate actually adds tremendous value to the outcome, as well as, you know, efficiency and efficacy. But my question is, is there an opportunity to expand the committee or replace committee members who are not there through some type of thoughtful process to actually increase that size of it for the remaining decisions in a, you know, an option B scenario? And it looks like Mrs. Jay is jumping up with enthusiasm.
Thank you. So just to recap, the committee was selected by our site council, which is made up of teachers, parents, a community member. We actually had a site council meeting this morning, and that was one of our agenda items, was to discuss that, knowing that that potentially could cut them up. We tabled that specific discussion for a week, just to find out what happened this morning at the board meeting, but it was a discussion. There is a committee member that chose to resign through this process. That committee member was a representative of the community, not the parent community, but the community, so a representative who did not have students at Hopi. So currently, there is a position that has currently not been filled with that position. So we did discuss that this morning about the possibility of filling that position, just discussing the process and how that would happen would go through site council, as we did with the original, the original formation of the committee.
How many do we have on that committee?
I should know that number off the top of my head, but I do not. 10, thank you.
So given the size, I think that it also lends itself that we could expand. So we certainly would support the site council in expanding that slightly as well. So that would be very doable.
And the site council is willing to come back and do another meeting to discuss that specifically and talk about the process and how that would happen if we were to expand that committee.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I would like to add a little, I guess, thoughts and concerns.
Sure.
As we go down that path, because I agree with your opinion that continuity and understanding, shared understanding is very important. This has been an eight-month process, I believe, for this rebuild committee. There has been a lot of dialogue and conversations and tough choices based on realities that have been made over these past eight months. And that's, that's just simple cold hard fat. Anyone joining this committee in this process after eight months is going to be challenging for them. We don't want to set them up for failure as they come in and overwhelm them with the, you know, questions they have that were answered over eight months. And I do, I'm going to have to be honest here, I have grave concerns considering the rebuild committee has had tremendous pressure put on them by another community or another kind of self-appointed committee in the community that has strong ideas that they can do this all better. And I'm concerned about that dynamic being productive, if that's what's introduced. I know our rebuild committee has taken their responsibilities and their accountability in this decision-making seriously. And quite honestly, a lot of the efforts pursued by the outside community committee gravely concerned me, especially in the issues of procurement laws and what they've chosen to do and how they've chosen to do it. So I guess I'm just going to recommend highly that those steps are very cautiously taken, thoughtfully taken, and we're not setting anyone up for failure if that happens, and we can truly be productive moving forward.
So President Perleberg, to your point, I just, I'm going to say this so the principal doesn't walk out. We'll meet and discuss, because I want you to know, from a rebuild committee standpoint, I have seen the emails where the rebuild committee took some beating, but my principal has also taken some beating, and so I want to take this moment just to thank her, but she has gone under great criticism and been scrutinized, and so to your point, one of the difficulties of putting a committee together is who gets picked and who doesn't, and then the lashing back at our principal for those decisions when it was a site council decision. So thank you for your work and that leadership, and I'm sorry that you got treated like you did, because I think you've done a great job in your leadership.
Thank you. Board Member Hartman?
And last point on that before my second question, I concur with Dr. Burwell, thank you, Mrs. Jay, for what you've done, it's tremendous, and concur with Board Member Perleberg about that continuity. What I would offer to you is two things. One, you know, continue with the site council through the selection process. I know I've been on site council for many years in the past, and it uses a very thoughtful, thorough, reflective group, so I trust that process. And two, I very purposely actually said this in the context of option B, because the way to also manage that is through scope management. And we're, I would encourage to be very clear on what the forward scope requirements, objectives are of this committee, because what I've heard is it is something around the windows and it's something around the elevation, and there may be some cultural aspects of it. So it's not to renegotiate or re-discuss the past, it's we're moving forward with the scope of what is the responsibility of this group going forward. So if anyone's interested in rehatching the past, this is not the role for you, but if you're interested in moving this forward in a positive, generative, community-based way, absolutely, I think that could be a win. My last point is, I just wanted to share this because under, I mean, all these scenarios, I really appreciate the community's input. The process is a little interesting sometimes, because this has been a nine-month process, and I would say 99% of the input came within 1% of the timeframe, despite invitations to continuously have dialogue, which, I don't know, but it happens, so it is what it is. But here's my takeaway on this and responsibility as a board member, is I have the same criteria today as I had five, six months ago, when we signed each one of these individual procurement and incremental decisions. Five things are important to me, and the first three all relate to students. It's student safety, it's student security, and it's student learning environment. And by student learning environment, it automatically includes teachers, because I can tell from the input that we've collected today that that is utmost priority, is building an environment that's conducive to the next generation of learning. Number four is there's a fiscal responsibility. And what I'm hearing today, that's even more information than I had six, seven months ago, is that we're on a trajectory of 4% to 6% per year increase, which means three years, we're talking 12% to 16%, almost 20% increase. And that's not including the other million dollars that it is just on the baseline cost. So as a community member, remember, we're one of a very large community, 24,000 students, 12,000 families. We're asking for a 20% increase. We need to think hard about that. I know as a board member, stewardship and fiscal responsibility are incredibly important, and so that's a really important factor. And then the last is, you know, it's the... the aesthetics of it. So, I'm glad we're, we're addressing that piece of it. And whether it's the elevation, facade, or height, the fact that we're building the space to continue that conversation in an inclusive, community-based way, I think is a, is an excellent compromise. So, I just wanted to share, those are my criteria and very much appreciate the input and the process. I've tried to respond to almost every email, which isn't easy. But I appreciate your time. And just know, there's probably a 20X factor that's on this side that's trying to absorb all this information that happens, you know, in everything that we do. So, that's it.
Thank you. Thanks. Board Member Beckham?
I'm going to be a little bit of, I am, I'm, I'm an outlier here. First of all, I want to thank everybody who did email. And I will apologize. I have not answered, I don't believe anybody's email in the last two days because I physically have not been able to as I'm reading them and living, taking care of my family. So, please do know, I have read every email up until about 7:30 this morning. And I heard you. And I also then went out and, and I want to thank the rebuild committee and, and Mrs. Jay because I have sit-in on those committees. And they are doing what they're supposed to be doing and doing the best that they can with what they have. And I also then went out and I visited some of the schools. Because I agree with Mrs., Board Member Hartman, on the criteria. But there's also one is that it is aesthetics. It is our neighborhood schools. And we care how it looks. So, I went out and I visited the middle schools and drove around and looked at them from a, just a facility standpoint. And especially Ingleside, since that seems to be brought up all the time. And then going over to Kokopah and looking at that school because there seems to be a comparison there. Went and looked at Echo Canyon because that's come up. Obviously, have looked at Hopi, Kiva, went over to Anasazi, went over to Cheyenne, just to get a feel for these schools. And to remember, I'll be honest, my, my youngest is 18. It's been a while since I've been in elementary school. So, I had to kind of go back in time. And where I'm coming from is, I also grew up here, I believe in our neighborhoods. I believe in our communities. Not that anybody else doesn't. But that school is the hub of the community that I grew up in. I've had to personally go through change when they put up the fences because that is where we went every weekend to play with our kids. And all of a sudden, I don't know if it was 10 years ago, we were climbing over the fences because they were locked. And I admit, I was trespassing. And so, it's, it's, I'm seeing it beyond just the criteria. And I am confronting something that we are going to have existing neighbors in every single one of our rebuilds that I think want to have an input like Hopi has showed us. I don't think it is that unique to just that community. I know my community, Cherokee, will be the same way. I believe Kiva will be the same way. Ho-Ho Comp could be and Pima could be too. And I believe that, that because these are rebuilt and not new builds, we need to engage our community at an earlier stage. And this is where I'm an outlier. I believe it should have happened earlier. I think it should happen now. I think that we can still work with our committee, but we've got to come up with some hybrid to engage the neighbors and the community. I think it's important. I think it's important for this district to build those relationships. I heard from a teacher at Hopi yesterday, it was Monday morning. I did not realize, and I'll admit it, how hurt this community is until I heard her say, "We need to heal this community." I don't know that I would have used that term. But I want to respect her as a teacher, someone who says she's lived there for many years and her grandkids now are going to Scottsdale schools. So, I would like to see a difference in our process. I would like our board to have a discussion on how we can improve it and make it better, given what we've heard. I don't know when the appropriate time for that is. But I, I have some ideas that I would like to share. I've offered those and no one has come up and said, "Hey, what are those ideas?" And I'm a board member. So, I have felt a little bit like I have not had some of the input that I've offered that has not been reciprocated. I also then am going to bring up something that's difficult and, but I'm going to do it. And I'm, partly it's because I'm new. I started in, in January. And I will admit, it's a lot, it's not different than I thought, but there's a lot of information to learn, especially because the reason that I think most of us joined was for the academic side. We wanted to see the academics. And we are in a different arena right now with these rebuilds versus the academics. And I support Dr. Birdwell and her cabinet in what she's doing on, on the academic side. And I want to see that cabinet and Dr. Birdwell focused on the academics. And maybe we can come up with a way that we have their time not being taken up by this rebuild and can be focused on that academics where I think it's so important. And I have some ideas about that, too. So, I'm just offering it out there. I would like to get a better feel because I feel, and I, and I apologize for being long-winded, but somebody else brought this up at the meeting on the 16th. The last gentleman, who was a former board member, got up at the end after two and a half hours and said, "I believe that we are directing our comments to the wrong person," who was Dr. Birdwell. And he looked at Robert Perleberg and said, "We should be giving our comments to the board." And it's the first time I had thought about it in that way. And it made me unclear about what my role was as a board member. So, I would like to have some clarity around that because if I'm being asked to approve a design and I don't have any input in that design, it makes me very uncomfortable. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
For listening today.
Any other comments or questions? I, I guess I'll take the opportunity to, to somewhat respond. I, I appreciate, appreciate the comments here today and your honesty. Our board always has work to do in, in defining our roles and, and how we're going to do them best. And, and I'm incredibly proud of this governing board that we work hard at our best practices and our communication and our shared understanding as an example for our whole community. So, I do respect that. I look forward to our discussions about process, especially in this rebuild. I think it'll be a lively debate. I think definitely, I am one that comes a little from a, a different perspective in that input is wonderful. Clearly, this community has shown there is love, there is passion, there is caring, there is thoughtfulness. And I think each and every community has that character as well. It might be expressed differently. It might look differently, which indeed might change the process. We received an email yesterday that I actually found a little humorous because it said, "Oh, we're always going to try and improve this process. Look at Pima." It was, it changed and it was great. Or it was different and it was great. And actually, I don't believe it was different at all. It, it just went well. So, in my opinion, these emotionally charged decisions like these, I struggle to see a perfect process of input that with 2020 hindsight, you can always look back and say, "Oh, man, we, we got just the right number of, of people giving us input." I think that's always going to be a challenge. But of course, we always try to improve. So, at a certain point, though, I tend to respect more those who are truly accountable and truly responsible to these decision-makings and those that must answer to all the priorities set by the realities. They must make tough choices. And I work very hard to recognize if, if they've done their due diligence, then I try and respect those tough choices. And I think the early hurdles of this footprint, of this design kind of speak to that point. You either do or you don't respect those tough choices that others work hard to be informed to make. It's still astounding to me that we still have volunteers that sign up for this responsibility as well, to help make these tough decisions, to take the responsibility. I will become informed. I will try and learn everything that I need to learn to make these decisions. I'm going to try and represent my community. That is a huge challenge, a huge burden that we put on our community so many times in this district. And again, I also extend my gratitude for all of those that were involved in this process, that contributed to this process, that took the brunt of the frustrations of this process. I, I commend you all. I, I have great respect for what you have all done. It wasn't pretty getting here today, this day, but I have full confidence that your intentions were good and you worked tremendously hard to bring the community input to the, to these decisions as much as you could. I will say that I also respect the teachers, the staff, and the site leadership that stand up for this responsibility in this decision-making and make tough choices and, and have to defend those choices sometimes to community members that just don't see their lens. Throughout this process, that's what I, I see informed decision-making. I have seen responsiveness from all those who took on the responsibility to make these decisions. I've seen thoughtfulness and I've seen a tremendous amount of hard work. And it's clear through this option B that that hard work will continue. And I think the people who have been most involved in this informed decision-making should continue that work. And hopefully, they will agree to do it. The arguments that have come to us to kind of ignore all those efforts over the last eight months and start again because there's just a small community faction that believes truly in their heart they can do it better, I'm sorry, I, I respect your opinions, but those arguments just were simply not compelling to me. Option B is the only option in my opinion that respects the responsibility this governing board has to its entire community and to its dedication to student-focused decision-making. I encourage the board to approve it today. I also make a plea to the Hopi community, heal thyself. Challenge those who incite divisiveness for their own agenda. Put your love and your energies, which are truly impressive, put them into making this new campus a home. Because without that, no matter what design you have, it really is just a building. So, those are my statements. If there's any other board members that would like to make comment or make a motion. Board Member Hartman?
I feel like I've shared all my comments at this point. But my understanding is really we don't have to make a motion if we move forward with B.
We, we, we have to make a motion if we want to accept option B. Otherwise, it is another.
Option A is, is the only, the only thing that we have going is, is really option A is the path that we're on and the approval that the board had. If you want us to take all the input that we did to create option B, we would ask that you would give us a vote on that. And then we'll go forward and bust through numbers and stay within budget.
Board Member Kirby?
Okay. So, I'll weigh in. You know, I, prior to doing this, I served on the Paradise Valley Town Council. And the year I ran for election was the year Mona Lucia came up out of the ground. And not too long ago, we brought Mountain Shadows up out of the ground. And I was on council that did that. We had the same thing happened in both of those. You could call them a rebuild because there was a structure there already. The same thing happened in our community that's happening here. So, I don't know that it can ever be avoided. I think it's just the nature of the beast. Emotionally, I want to start over. Emotionally, I would very much like to start over. But as a board member, I'm responsible for, and held accountable to several other factors. I've never been shy in offering my opinions. I don't wait for people to ask for my opinions. I offer them. That is my responsibility as a board member. I am concerned about our academics in this district. And I'm also concerned that we have unintentionally diverted our resources in this school district to one school. We have 23,000 other students that we're responsible for in 28 other schools. And I am gravely concerned about what's happening in the rest of our district. So, I concur with Board Member Beckham. If there's something that we can do and fund out of this bond, which probably means that every project takes a little off the top to fund, I'm supportive of that. Because as a board member, I brought Dr. Birdwell and her team here to address the academics in this district. And we must do that. So, if there's an opportunity to allow Dr. Birdwell and her team to do what they do best and bring in a consultant or an expert to manage these projects, I'm supportive of that as well. So, I want to continue to allow for input. And I failed to say at the beginning of this, the rebuild committee has my utmost gratitude. I've talked with one of you, two of you. And I, I can't say thank you enough for what you have worked on and what you have done. So, I'm supportive of option B. I, weighing all the factors that I'm held accountable to as a board member that goes beyond one community, goes beyond seven or eight rebuilds, and actually moves to the other, to the 23,000, 24,000 students we have in this district. That's what I'm responsible for.
Board Member Cravitz?
I'll be brief. I just wanted to acknowledge all the emails that we have received, that I've received. I may not have responded to all of them, but I did read them. I also want to thank the committee as well. Fifteen or sixteen meetings goes above and beyond the call of duty. And I thank you for listening to your community. What strikes me is at one of the community meetings, I think one of the last speakers got up and talked about our competition and how we must be aware of what our competition is doing. And we have competition down the street, et cetera. I happened to drive by the competition yesterday. And the competition is in a former office building. And what drives people to our schools, and I've heard this for years, is our academics and our programs. I am confident that we can work and come up with a plan that I think most of our community will be happy with. Compromise is not pretty. Nobody's ever happy with 100% of what they get. They don't get 100%. You have to give, there's give and take. But I think we can come up with something that our community will be happy with. We'll work on the facade. I still don't know what constitutes a build, a school that will fit into the Arcadia community. I drove up and down Lafayette and I took pictures as I was driving, which I don't recommend, but thankfully, there was nobody behind me. And I took pictures of houses because I was trying to figure out what, what, what will this, how will this school fit into the community? There are so many different architectural designs on, in the community. I do believe we can come up with a plan, working forward on option B, that will be more satisfactory to hopeful, to the majority of the people. But again, I believe it's our academics and our programs that will attract people to our schools. And I believe we need to move forward. And we, as my colleagues have said, we do have a fiscal responsibility, not just to our parents and our students and each individual community, but to the residents who with, who live within the Scottsdale Unified School District, all of the taxpayers who voted for the bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Beckham?
I like the way that you said that, Board Member Kirby, if you had everything you could, you'd start over again. Because that's probably what I would choose too. But we, I don't feel that that's fiscally responsible. What I would ideally like, and I'm going to put it out there, is option B and C. And that is, is because the height and the box of the classroom concerns me. And that is, is because the height and the box of the classroom concerns me, and the outdoor learning spaces that may end up being at the back of a building, and maybe they've moved forward. But I don't know if we could spend a little bit of time, which I know means a little bit of money, and maybe a little bit isn't not the right word, to at least look at reducing the height of that classroom building, and if that meant splitting it to open up some more space, interior space for the outdoor learning, I would, that would be my ideal situation. And I don't know if that's possible. And it may be that you look at it for X amount of hours, just to see if you can play with it, and if it makes sense. And if it doesn't, you have a reasoning that at least you looked at that option, and it didn't work. And maybe that's already been done, I just haven't asked. So in Option B, I would at least like to discuss.
At this point, I guess I'll jump in here. Serious concerns about us just not being clear with direction today. I do believe, and I would encourage our staff, to speak to the fact of that Option C and that split, split design. My understanding, there were pros and there were cons, and those cons and pros were discussed with our teachers, with our staff, with our architect, and the cons outweighed the pros. And I would hate to, once again, send, send our rebuild committee, and send everyone who's involved in this decision-making kind of down another rabbit hole that maybe they've already taken a look at and decided on. So whoever might want to speak to that. Can I just? Yes, go ahead. Board Member Kirby?
Yeah, Board Member Beckham, my homeschool, Kiva, very similar to Hopi. And I know, at least back in the day, how we did outdoor learning there. I didn't know what these indoor spaces looked like. I didn't know what I didn't know, until quite honestly, this year, when I started touring the schools again. And some of the schools up north that do have these indoor learning spaces, I was blown away about how they're using those spaces for educating students. And personally, my reflection on that was, wow, I wish my kid could have had this. I wish my kid could have had this opportunity, because it was powerful, of what teachers and aides and volunteers were doing in these indoor learning spaces that we couldn't do with outdoor. And I'm not diminishing outdoor, because it has its benefits too, but I wouldn't want to walk away from something like that because of what I've seen.
And to be clear, that Option C is not taking away, as I would imagine all the indoor spaces...
I actually believe it is. I believe that's one of the cons of Option C.
The way that it's been designed then. So I guess I would have envisioned a little different design, that even though you are dividing it, that you do have some indoor spaces also. Because at our homeschool of Cherokee, we have, well, just so the public knows, we don't have windows, and I thought it would be horrible, and it didn't end up being horrible. But we did have indoor learning spaces, and we use them, especially as volunteers. So I personally use them, and I am all for indoor learning spaces as well.
And I, please, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that priority is part of the current footprint, the large building, and there is loss there if you decide to start cutting up. If that's incorrect, please correct.
Yes, if I may, the Option C, where we separate the two classroom buildings, or separate the classroom building into two classroom buildings, drastically minimizes and reduces the indoor learning spaces because of the cost of maintaining a budget. And so our initial, very quick concept does not have actually any in it right now, but the desire, and we have a concept in the back of our minds, where we can bring in at least a learning area. But the indoor learning areas, if you haven't seen them, they are, I believe, and I think most educational folks and industry leaders would say that the opportunity for the collaborative learning spaces drastically helps the different types of learning styles for children. Outdoor learning spaces also do that, but outdoor learning spaces also have limitations as far as noise, attentiveness, obviously, our climate, we have certain times a year. So that's why we would like to further explore those outdoor learning spaces, to see what those real, true, applicable spaces, how they really would support the academic environment. And thank you for that. I am not at all saying that we shouldn't have the indoor spaces. I would just would like to look at being maybe creative with those, by making, not changing any of the buildings, but the height, but maybe moving, I mean, it just appears maybe that there's some things that could be done, and I just, I'd be interested to know if they've been looked at. Because the height in the big box is, really does bother me with the design, and especially with that height in that particular location, it just does.
Board Member Hartman, did you have a comment?
I think it was addressed by our architect. But my, and I concur, because what I took away was, there were six spaces, which are reduced down to one space is a possibility. And from just, you know, 21st century learner, and that collaboration is so critical to the academic learning experience, that for me, that's when I heard that that, you know, back to our give and take, that was what we were going to have to take away. Yeah, and see, to get it. To me, that was, I literally wrote it down, because that is really, will impact our learners at the end of the day. I am prepared for a motion, unless there's more conversation. I would like to move for Option B, continued plan with layout changes, as discussed, and...
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Hartman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Kravitz. All in favor of the continuing, Option B, continued plan with layout changes and future discussions? Do...
No, no Option C in that, right? Added to it. It's just B as a statement.
Yes, Option B, Option B continues discussion with the plan that we have, but it incorporates and includes all the recommendations, discussions that staff are discovering.
Option B includes, as I presented, continuation of the exterior design. It includes potential reduction in height. It does not split the building.
Right. And looking at the queuing in the concrete?
Yeah, the queuing in the concrete that came out, yes.
Yes.
Other options that might come up?
So I have a motion and a second to approve Option B, as clarified. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. Motion passes 4-1. Thank you all, thank you to the Hopi community. Good luck to you all. Oh, sorry, a motion... Kirby, seconded? A second? Aye, a second. All in favor to adjourn? All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.